Start on time. All right, I'm glad to see a good crowd here tonight. I want to welcome everybody to October fifteenth meeting. If I could, it's time to get approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it. Commissioner Kitchens, would you do the honors for us tonight?
Be happy to, Chairman. We got will standing, bow your heads with us. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all the blessings you give us. We just thank you for loving us the way you do. We just ask you to watch over all those in Israel, watch over all those who've been affected by the last two storms, Lord. You know their needs. We have so many of them in our community, so many of them in our fellow communities around us. Just put your arms around them, Lord, help them in everything that they need. Watch over us tonight, Lord. Make sure that all the decisions we make are pleasing to you. And just guide our hearts and our minds, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kitchens. We can move on. We'll move on to consent agenda and approval of the minutes. We had the first Tuesday in October first along with the executive session. If I had opportunity to review the minutes, I'd obtain a motion.
So move.
And a motion we have second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it. Mr. Sims here tonight. All right, we'll move on to new business. Tax increase for septic and well permits. Ms. Graham?
Do you all need copies of that? You have a couple.
I gave you some.
We got a couple.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
So if you look at this, we are proposing changes in the septic and water fees for the environmental health over the Health Department. I'm Maggie. I have Elise and Neil with me as well. Basically, what we're looking at is fees for the new septic systems, any repairs for existing septic systems, any additions or modifications, or like changes to existing systems that are currently working. And then we have a couple well fees that we are also proposing being changed. Our current fees haven't been adjusted since 2010. They don't reflect increases in salaries, need for equipment, travel, and other costs. We're trying to get all of our fees uniform across all thirteen district, I mean thirteen counties in our district. These fees calculate the time for travel, the time it takes to perform the site visits, the administrative costs, the equipment costs, and any follow-up visits for those sites. There are additions to new fees, so like completely new fees we're also adding. This is a cost about like sixty-five percent of the actual cost of the fee. So we're not increasing the fee to a hundred percent of what it costs, just sixty-five to make sure we can get closer to covering how much it costs to do each site visit. If the fee was below the district average, we brought it up to either that average or the sixty-five percent. And then if it was above the district average, we just kept it the same. So these four pages with the colors are the the new fee schedule. So any of these with the orange are completely new fees, or they're new wording of fees. So all of the commercial permits will be the same price over all the districts. And then the residential fees are brought up to sixty-five percent. So the green column is how much it costs for us to provide the service. The second column, the first white column, is the sixty-five percent of the actual cost. And then the final column is the fee we are proposing to change it to. One change I'll draw your attention to is on that first page, the seven and eighth one, we are splitting up homes permits from four bedrooms and lower and then five bedrooms and higher. Because once you get to a five-bedroom home, the systems just get a lot larger, so they require more work and longer inspections. So we're doing that with new permits and the repair permits. And then we are splitting up if a level three soil study is required or if it's not required. So if they already have a soil study on file, their repair permit, their application fee would be less than if we have to go out and do an entire soil investigation. Once you get to the third page, that is the end of the septic fees. The last couple are just about the pumper permit fees. We do have a couple companies that do pump septic tanks in Jones County. Once you get to the gray line, that is where the well water fees start. This is really just an adjustment of the current fees to make sure we can cover all the cost of the equipment we use and the sample, the water sample testing equipment. The last three fees on that last page are just three miscellaneous mobile food service fees. We're consolidating the mobile food service base and truck fee into one, and then the annual truck fee for an additional truck. And then we had the laws change about trucks going to different counties. So we just have to have an extra seventy-five dollar fee to cover authorizing out-of-county mobile food trucks, which we don't see terribly often. The last couple pages are just a comparison of FY twenty-four from the old fees and the new fees, what they would have changed to, and it would be about five thousand dollars extra for that first half of that year. Does anyone have any questions? Did I go too fast?
Um, I'll start from the back. So the fee comparisons.
Yes.
Did y'all just use like a percentage across the board, or?
So those are, the first line of the the numbers are what we charged them.
Right.
Currently, those are the fees we have. And the second one would be our new fee.
Yeah, I was just, there's some of them are, some of them are staying the same, some of them are going up a little and some of them are going up a lot.
Yeah, so if it was above the district average, they kept it the same. If it was below the district average, they brought it up to that sixty-five percent.
They're trying to get everybody in the thirteen in the district that will be a comparison rate, so wherever someone goes, they're paying the same.
I was just talking about these, the comparisons between the first half and the second half, if there was a, if there was a consistent way of going from first half to second half. I get the first three pages, the colored pages, showing what they were and where the district, the averages is from the districts. I don't have any, a lot of those were the same or went up some. So we don't charge an application fee now or site fee for, say, residential less than four bedrooms?
We do. It's just all the same fee. So it doesn't matter the size of your house. So if you have a one-bedroom or eight-bedroom house, it's all the same fee. So if you come and get a residential repair permit, it's just two hundred dollars right now.
So we're just changing the fees to be consistent with the district?
Well, we're bringing them up to at least sixty-five percent of the actual cost for our county. And then they're trying to get the rural counties in our district all about the same price. So when contractors go from each place, they can get, they can tell everybody like the right information, no matter what county. But right now, we're just doing sixty-five percent of the actual cost unless it was higher than the average, and then it stayed the same.
So you said rural counties. So I'm most familiar with our eleven-county region. We're not talking about Macon, Bibb, or Houston.
Theirs are much higher than ours.
Correct. So beyond those two, deducted out, what four other counties do you?
So our district, District Five Two, then North Central Health, is Macon and Houston, but it's also Crawford, Jones, Baldwin. I'm gonna miss it.
Peach, Pulaski. I understand that. Just beyond that, what additional, like when you get beyond those, what additional areas did you look at?
We just looked at our areas. So just the thirteen counties near us.
Okay.
Right.
I think what you're asking, Daylon, is did you look at other counties with similar populations, demographics, etc.?
Well, I'm familiar with our eleven-county region, because you know, that's what we deal with. But you said you've taken out Macon and Houston, right? You don't.
It's included in the thirteen-county district.
All right, it's included.
It's all, so basically, if you go to Houston County, let's say you want to apply for a new septic system, that whatever that fee may be, it's gonna be the same exact fee. The nomenclature's staying the same.
Yep.
You just might pay a different fee based on the work that they do over there versus what we do over here. That's the only thing that's changing.
Gotcha.
As it is right now, every county basically has their own fee names. So that's confusing when you jump back and forth between if you go to Houston County, go to Jones County, go to Baldwin County. So everybody's gonna have the same structure going forward. Does that help?
It does.
Any other questions from the board? I'm gonna have to, I'll sit on the floor, so I won't be able to vote, but I think in line right now, it'll be a motion to approve this fee change.
Won't come from me.
Any other questions from the board?
So, yeah, one more question, Chairman. So the orange ones you said are new fees, and it's showing current charges zero, and then it's got the final suggested new fee. But if I look at, I'm looking on page, well, it's our page nine, your first page. The next, the last orange one is new system L three required less than four bedrooms. And then if I go to the next page, new system, less than four bedrooms. So it looks like, is this where you're dividing them up with two oranges and then what they used to be?
That's correct.
And when was the last increase we had?
Two thousand ten. And just out of curiosity, the food trucks, like you went higher than the average actual cost?
The food trucks right now, they pay a base fee of two fifty-five and a mobile fee of two fifty-five. So we were just doing a base and mobile one fee of two fifty-five, because right now it's.
Double?
Yeah, it's kind of really hard for them to start the process when it's.
It's like penalizing them.
Five hundred dollars of just our permits.
Okay. But all these new suggested fees are actually less than what it cost?
Yeah, most of them.
You know, again, I'm, I'm gonna tell you I'm opposed, because I'm a, I'm a guy who's after the little guy. And the little guy in Little Jones County shouldn't be paying what somebody in Houston County should be paying. Costs much higher in Houston County, and I don't want to be equivalent, because I don't think we are.
They're not.
Right. I'm just, you know, just for the sake of being at the average, right?
Right.
Then I do understand the, you know, not having made a change since two thousand ten. I think there's a different or reasonable middle ground for it, but.
So the whole purpose, so if, if they were too aggressive, we'll come back to this and see, hey, we were too aggressive with our fees, maybe we need to bring them back down. So that's, the whole purpose is to do it in a three-year cycle. So last year, if y'all remember, we did food service. And so part of that revision is, again, we circle back to the mobile food unit, and we figured out, okay, we're actually double charging people. We need to walk that back. So that was included in that. So next year it'll be hotel and pools. So if we feel like the septic ones were, again, aggressive, we can walk that back again.
Right.
And so every three years, we're just gonna evaluate. So, so we don't get caught in this situation again where we're losing money. Obviously, we can't make money, because we can't do that by law. But we're just trying to stay afloat and not trying to get anybody.
I understand.
When, when do you have to have this, these answers? When do you plan on making these changes?
So thirty days after y'all decide, so if y'all decide today, the law goes in thirty-two days.
Because I, I agree with Daylon. I think, I don't like being compared with Houston and Bibb either. So I would like to see, instead of having an average of our thirteen counties, show us some of those counties and prices, and then show us where we are on that scale. And I think that would get, and I'll say that and also say that I agree. If we hadn't had an increase in fifteen years, we know an increase is due. I just, I just want to make sure that, and I, I'll just be honest, I don't, I don't like approve this now, and if we think it's too much, we'll come back and unapprove it. I like to be sure on the front end and approve it.
So you want to see Houston's fees and?
And like another smaller county?
Yeah, Houston, Bibb, and maybe two counties that are similar to us in size. Size meaning population and growth.
That's putting them in hours.
It is, yes, that's one of our cases.
Basically, give it to us in column form, spread it out.
Okay, I'll do that.
That'll be good.
I got a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone to get more information, Chairman.
Gotcha.
All in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you. BN One license, Mr. Fernandez? How do you do, sir?
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Xavier Fernandez, and I've applied for a BN One license for changing ownership.
You've got a report for?
Yeah, there's a report in your book from the Sheriff's Department where they went out and did all the work for the background. Everything came back fine on their end.
Any questions for Mr. Fernandez?
I'm glad to see the narrative where they had maybe a slight discrepancy and figured it out, did their check on and everything. All right, motion to approve, Chairman.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? No, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
You want to pose? Let's have, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. George, sales ratio study, appeal to the Board of Arbitrators.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Mr. Eddie. I'm here representing the Board of Assessors to ask you to approve or appeal to the Board of Arbitrators, which is the next level in the sales ratio study. This is an independent board, unlike the DOAA, which is judge and jury over their own study. This is an independent board that looks at the evidence and the statistics and makes a decision. Counties have been very successful at this level in getting a move, real significant movement in the, in their ratio based on their studies.
Is this the data you're gonna use for the arbitrator?
It's gonna be part of the information that was used at the initial, the, the, the sales ratio that we do internally that comes up to a different number than what DOAA comes up to.
Okay.
Last year, just to give you an example, there were nineteen counties that got movement in their ratio at this level. And this year, oh, sorry.
No, I was just saying, do you know how many went to arbitration?
Uh.
Is that like fifty percent of them, or seventy-five, twenty-five?
Last year, there were eighty, there were eighty counties that were under the thirty-six percent. And probably sixty-five of them probably appealed. Sixty percent of them probably appealed.
This is the next logical step in the process, right?
Yeah, this is a more, I won't say fair, but fair determination of what the numbers actually look like based on our internal ratio that we do every year. Comes to a much higher number than what DOAA comes up to.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, we have a second?
A second for discussion, Chairman.
Sure.
The, you gave some numbers on cost for the, we pay for one and a half arbitrators, right?
Right.
Ours and then half of the other one.
Right.
Those numbers still good?
Yes, as far as I know.
I guess, Jason, we'll continue to see what we're gonna pay for.
Is there money in your budget to pay for those kind of things, or would it?
I haven't seen my numbers really for this year.
Okay.
On paper.
I mean, generally speaking, I guess, in a typical budget year, you wouldn't have money allocated for that.
I don't put fluff in my budget for miscellaneous stuff that I don't usually use. Sorry.
Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Public Works.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sean can't make it tonight, so I was going to just share this for him. So it was already approved for the four roll-off containers in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. So we managed to actually bring that number down to twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one through the Sourcewell Co-op called Waste Quip. So we had some quotes given to us. The total for Waste Quip would come out to the twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one for four containers. And that brings them to six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents per container, and that includes shipping. This is a lot cheaper than the other option, which was Sansom. And Sansom's cost was seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per container. So it's great savings if we go with them. It actually saves fourteen hundred dollars. And then also, the lead time with Waste Quip is two weeks versus Sansom, which is four to five weeks. So we, since it is also a Sourcewell Co-op, we're recommending that we go with Waste Quip.
So the savings is a full, I'm doing the math, another full meter.
About a third. So it was a fourteen hundred dollar savings overall or per container?
No, it was overall.
Yeah. Overall.
So about a third of a container.
Okay, my bad. I was thinking of each one. I said, well, let's buy extra.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That is per container. I had to look at my notes again. That is per container. The overall savings, the difference on this was twenty-five thousand versus thirty-one thousand, if we round. So. Mm-hmm, yeah.
You're right, Chairman. We can get another, another forty euro container for the same amount.
They, they did give us a quote for if we did five containers. However, that would go over the approved budget. And it's my understanding, if we go over the budget, we would need to ask for that instead.
Over the approved thirty? Yeah, it was thirty thousand, I have to look.
Yeah, I think it was exactly thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. I think that's my understanding.
Yeah, thirty-two, two thirty-three would it be for the other amount?
Mm-hmm.
Well, at least we got some savings.
Yeah, we got some savings. I would say we, you know, we put an extra container somewhere else and cut another truckload out if we could. We can see how these work, and if need be, we can come back and get.
And they can also do it in the purple color to match the other ones. So both of these companies are able to match color.
Well, then, motion to approve, Chairman. Second.
Second. I don't think there's gonna be much done. Mr. Martin?
All in favor, aye?
I had to call on you. I seen the last one, so I could not to call on you.
Makes sense.
Bert? You having fun shopping tractors?
Oh, yeah. We've had a good time. We've demoed several tractors, and we've come to the conclusion of a model that we want. And it's a Ventrack tractor. Oh, no. Don't do me like that. But the thing about a Ventrack is they're a unique tractor that will serve a lot of our needs. It's not really your average tractor designed for a farm. It's more suited for ball fields, golf courses, that type of thing. We would be using it for, there are special attachments that can be used for infields and leveling. We'll use it to cut our retention ponds. It's small enough to get in our trails at the mountain bike course and in Jake's Woods coming up. We'll use it for turf management. That includes seeding, fertilization, and aerification, one of the attachments. We would give, be an airifier, hillsides. It actually has, you can set it up with eight tires for stability to where you can really get like on a thirty-degree hill. And then plus, we're gonna get a power rake that'll help us in maintaining our gravel that we have. We've been told that it can really fluff up the gravel really good, and where it looks like you need new gravel, you hit it with that power rake, and you know, you look as good as new. We've got a couple quotes from different places around the state. One of them is the biggest Ventrack dealer. There's not, there's not a lot of Ventrack dealers. It's a kind of a unique tractor. And then one from the closest one. The closest one is the one that we'd like to go with tonight, which is also the cheapest one. And we did use Sourcewell pricing, and it's out of Powerhouse Outdoor Equipment and Warner Robbins. And we'd like to, you know, for one, they're the cheapest. The price is coming in at fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. But for two, just for servicing the tractor as it needs it, we'd rather go to Warner Robbins than up in Atlanta. So it works out for, for both of those. But tonight, I'm basically asking permission to move forward with the purchase of the tractor for fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four through Sourcewell Pricing with Powerhouse Outdoor Equipment.
And they're, and they're gonna do the service program?
Yes, yeah.
How long's the service program?
I think it was, let me look right here. Three years. Think I saw.
So we're, we're not doing a lease, we're actually?
No, we're doing a purchase. We looked into the lease, and it was just as cheap to do the purchase.
And how many additional accessories are we getting with that?
We're gonna get initially with this quote right here, we're getting the power rake, we're getting the airifier, and we're getting the bucket. And one of the things that makes this tractor unique is that the PTO's on the front, and it's articulating. That's kind of what makes it really unique compared to your sign. So we're getting three, and then we're gonna get some other attachments that are on the cheaper side with our general funds, like a rough cup mower and some of the infield equipment, which are within our means of our general budget. So this piece of equipment's really gonna, right now, we're basically set up to mow grass and weed eat and, and those types of things. And we don't really have the equipment to do any real work that we really need to do, and this tractor's gonna take us to the next level.
Commissioner Kitchens, you were, made a comment when you said that.
I was giving him a hard time, because I know they love these golf course tractors. The specialty piece of equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye? Appreciate y'all. Sound like everybody's aye. Thank you. Mr. Brandon? We've got water extension projects.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
We have, in front of y'all, you have two bids for two areas in Mr. Kitchens' district. In this, this entire area, currently, there are three roads that are not, do not have water services on them. Gregory Drive, which is, we surveyed it. We didn't have any, anybody ever respond to us. We had one gentleman out of, I think, twenty-something houses, so kinda threw that one out. McKenzie Road and Maynard Road. Maynard has, there's, I think, five houses on it. It's, they're having some well issues out there currently. So we've had several calls over the last few weeks from several residents out there asking, you know, what they can do. They're a few hundred feet away from, they can almost start rocking here, our water, other water services. They drive past it, but we, we don't have the means to get serving them water currently. So they've been, they've been asking for a water service out there. That bid for, from sellers who is currently doing all of our other water expansion projects comes in at a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty. The other road is McKenzie Road, and it is across from Rifle Range on Upper River. Currently, there are seven houses on the road. They're about to start building three additional houses, and I have half of the customers that want water on that road. The issue with McKenzie, somewhere in a past administration, we, Jones County Water ran a six hundred and fifty-foot service line to a single house on that road. So at McKenzie, all of the houses on McKenzie, there's only one house that has water. It's right in the middle. So it's a three-quarter inch service line running down the right way to that single house. So I've had, I've had.
He said previous administration.
Previous administrations. I'm not sure who lives there. I really. I'm not sure who lives there, I, I really. I'm sure somebody, somebody knows. Across the street from that house, there are three lots, two that have already been cleared, there are three separate homeowners that are planning on building, I've heard from all three of them. And they're fairly upset, 'cause, you know, they bought the house thinking that there was county water on the road, 'cause the neighbor across the street has a meter box in their front yard and um, having to tell them, we do not have water service currently. So they're upset that they're have to spend ten to twelve thousand dollars on the well, when the guy across the street has a meter box. So that house, that, that street there comes in at eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, so this is me coming to y'all, asking what, what direction would y'all like me to go with this? Uh, combined, we're looking at a total of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, eighty-eight dollars for the two streets. We have the money and savings, we, we're just shy of two million dollars in our savings account currently. Um, we could pay for it out of savings, we could roll it over into our current um, construction projects that we have going on. Just want direction from y'all.
I'm sure there's gonna be other roads on District Four that we need to be hit to that we're not aware of, correct?
District Four.
In your.
There's, there's roads in every district, absolutely.
I'm just trying to figure out where we're, where we're doing expansion, expansion right now, this is expansion off of, oh, that's expansion of existing, I got you.
This is existing.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking new service going out to Maynard, but that's.
And these are, just, uh, just, um, clear the air, these are the ones that haven't reached out to me.
Okay.
Our, our department have been asking for McKenzie since I've, I've been here, that was one of the very first customers I ever spoke to, was one of the gentleman on McKenzie.
I continuously get calls on McKenzie with accusations from past reasoning for it, and that is a, that's one of them, we talked about it before. You can't fix all the, all the wrongs that were done, that one is as blatant as it gets, it's a straight paved road. And you go by four houses and hook one up, and, you know, how do you, how do you justify?
Yeah, so we have to service.
Yeah, how do you, how do you justify?
Yeah.
To those that didn't get water, but then again, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna advocate for it, 'cause it's in my district, I have to hear it, but um, I, I, I will also acknowledge that there are other districts that are gonna have the same situation.
Absolutely.
And all I can say is that I'll, I'll advocate for this one and hope, advocate for theirs when they're in their district.
And, and I, I apologize, I'm thinking sellers and all the new construction, I, for some reason, I had my, well, we got new construction, but now that, my bad.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I think they were probably low because they're already mobilized.
Sure.
Less than two miles away, three miles away, so.
So how come every other parcel on that piece of, on that road shows who's the ownership, but this one parcel has no information?
I haven't looked out, I, I've seen on, on the dole, but.
It's probably a parcel that's protected from public view for maybe.
Yeah, you can do that.
LE, law enforcement or something, you don't know.
Oh.
Maybe protected.
Yeah, you, you can do that, you can go to Pam Dixon's office and, oh, get a lot of stuff, you know, get protection on it.
Usually it'll, usually it'll say information not available, or something, this one, it does nothing.
So, he's somebody's friend who got water, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Cool.
Yep. Yep. And again, now I have four upset residents out there asking why they can't have water as well.
You know, um, I'm all for getting water to people, my people in District Four have been waiting for a long time. Um, and so our water priorities are of interest to me, I know.
District Two, we got pressure issues in Bradley, we can make a cross main in front of this building here, crossing the railroad, going under the railroad and connect. So the water doesn't have to leave this tank and go all the way down to downtown Gray and come back up Highway eleven. It's an easy connection, just takes some coordination with the city of Gray and maybe a work session, could they get that accomplished? That boosts the pressure in Bradley. So we all have water issues, water needs.
I understand.
Work session, maybe?
Sure.
Um, and put some of these back on the table, if you're putting up the two million that's in the construction account for projects, we need to really look at how we can best utilize that against what people need and what people want. Um, I don't know how fast that'll be in terms of your new homes going in that neighborhood.
Yeah, they, they're, they're started, they've already programmed on those, so.
But, you know, I'm a realtor, so the first thing I check is, is there water and is there sewer? So if somebody didn't do their job.
Understood.
Or they, they, anyway. Um, I say we do a work session unless, get to it.
Unless, you know, we also have supply needs too that we need to address, so I'm sure some of this money in your savings could be supplied, because we got some wells we need to look at too, so we don't need to. We need to, you, you address them all in a work session, you know, uh, we don't need to put the cart, you know, cart in front of the horse, pushing hard. And, uh, customers, and we run, you know, run slack on water, and so we just need to make sure a work session would be great. You tell us when you think you'll be ready to.
Let's do the next one.
Next meeting?
Yes, sir.
You're good with that?
Yep.
Our work session next meeting? All right, we'll work.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
Mr. Ingram?
You need a motion for that, chairman?
Yeah.
Motion to postpone to the work session.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye? Thank y'all for keeping me straight.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On October fourth, Friday afternoon, we opened bids on the Griselda Industrial Park Force Main. Had three bidders, Sellers Construction Company was the low responsible bid, but four million, four thirteen, nine seventy-two. Tonight, we're asking y'all to award the project to Seller Constru- Sellers Construction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion?
What was our, we, we, we within budget on this one?
We have a million, five oh three left. So we're, we're well under budget, we're about seventy-five percent of what we actually had.
All right, we'll get back to McKenzie Drive and.
I guess we'd say prices are finally coming down to reality, or?
So waiting on those prices to come down was a benefit?
It, prices definitely came down. I'm not sure if it's as mu- I think some materials came down. And I think somebody needed some work. Because most of the difference between one and two is in one item, and that's the actual construction of the line.
Right.
Oh, I see that.
Yeah, that's five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars out of a nine hundred thousand dollar difference. So.
Any more discussion or questions for Mr. Ingram, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Free ground, please. Mr. Resner, you're up.
So, this afternoon, we had the bid opening for the Liberty Park improvements, and, uh, we had three total responses there. We went through this afternoon and scored the RFP. The, uh, the, the low price was certainly one of the, the factors, the largest factor. Ogles Construction, their price was two fifty-nine, oh one five. ICB submitted a price of four ten, oh five nine and ninety-one cents, and then Remfro Construction submitted a price of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four fifty-five. It's the recommendation of, of myself and the review panel that, uh, that the work be awarded to Ogles Construction. And we do have sufficient funds to, um, to, to finish that work.
And that's gonna finish Liberty Park?
That will finish Liberty.
Yeah, what was that number again?
Two. Two five nine, oh one five.
And where are they out of, Jason?
Ogles is out of Macon.
Okay.
Or Lizella, I think they have a Lizella address.
Okay. It, it keeps us in graces on everything else we were working on for extensions and all.
Yes, and we, we put a timeline in the, um, in the RFP, and they've indicated they can meet that, so.
I know that was a, a question when we made that phone call, so we're, we're, great.
Thirty days to mobilize, seventy-five days for construction.
I'm, I'm glad they're working with us, 'cause they, they didn't have to. All right. All right, we got a recommendation, you need a motion, chairman? I do.
Motion to approve and finish Liberty Park.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Sound good.
So now we can do more, um, splash pad for next year?
Hey, absolutely. Marking a hundred and fifty-nine thousand over budget.
I'm sure Haddock needs something.
See, y'all people, I try, I try on that splash pad every chance I can get.
I spread the wealth, and I mean, Haddock, District Four.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Hey, I, I never.
Even though I wasn't thinking correctly, I'm thinking new construction, not even thinking about, but hey, at least I was, it was the thought that counts, right?
It was the thought that counted, so.
If we can't, hey, if we can't laugh at this, sometimes you have to have a good laugh, sometimes you have to cry when you got.
No water, don't think about that thought either.
But, uh, let's see. Department heads, we got a bunch of them in here.
Oh, I've got one list, yes, chairman.
One more, what am I missing?
Jason, again?
I beat that gum, I tried to get us out here before seven o'clock.
And it's not super exciting, but it's, uh, periodically, GDOT wants us to update our ADA policy for our fifty-three eleven transit service. And so that's what you have before you is just a, an updated, um, Americans with Disabilities Act plan, uh, for our transit service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I was having, thank you. Jason, you wanna start? Uh. On the next one, which will be Department heads?
I don't think I have anything right now.
Wow. Department heads, Bert?
Everything's going good, Bert's wrecking golf, uh, we're wrapping up football, we're kind of wrapping the middle of soccer, and, uh, doing registration for basketball, we got a basketball meet tonight, so. Lots of kids out playing, and things are going well.
I'm gonna go ladies first, you got a, anything for Cub- Public Works?
This is top secret information, but we are, uh, planning to give Sean a goodbye.
Okay.
That's the biggest plan right now.
All right.
Other than that, all's good.
All right, Brandon?
Um, just clarification, do y'all want me to bring every project to the next work session, every little road?
Sure.
Little.
Yeah, row, but also, you know, we're looking at them.
Prices by then.
Sure. But you also say, uh, that we need to look at what, what expenditures, if it hasn't been figured for, our, our supply meeting, new wells, so.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna bust a, you know, bust up a saving account, so we forgot about the well, 'cause I mean, it's, again, it's.
We're looking at, uh, Tim and I and Jason, we're, we have something promising, hopefully promising, coming up, we've, we've had some good news on, on one of them here recently, or some, or some thoughts. Got some positive news. Um, only thing I have is, is about to get cold, so we're about to, uh, start ranking up here in the next few months.
So, chairman, we got a, a little bit in our construction account, and we got a little bit of savings off of this one, I would, hopefully, we could look at how we could leverage some of that money as maybe payments on a bond or, or a GFL loan or something, so that we can get more customers, and then those customers still add to our payment plan, instead of just using it as a project payment.
Right. All right, have I missed anybody tonight? Citizen comment, any citizens come, like to come forward tonight? Ms. Baldwin, you wanna take, start us off on commissioners?
I'm enjoying my fall break and can't wait to get back to the mountains.
Oh, I thought you was, can't wait to get back to work.
No. I went to work for a little while today.
And you're going back to the capital?
After Thursday.
Oh.
I will be attending the sheriff's salute.
Uh-huh, Thursday?
Thursday, in Jones County, that's always a wonderful, exciting event to attend if you're invited.
And you get to sample the sheriff's secret recipe.
His grandmother's potato salad.
Oh, yeah. You have to ask her where it comes from, I think Cisco makes it for him just perfect, perfectly, isn't that right?
It's his grandmother's secret recipe.
Okay. That's the story, you're sticking to it, okay. It is good, uh.
I had a great meeting at, in Athens at the legislative conference. Um, I'm gonna piggyback on something that you've wrote on your Facebook page, that I just shared also. There's some, there's some things that'll be on your ballot to vote on, that you really need to do research on. You need to do your own research on it, don't believe what you see on Facebook, don't believe everything that everybody says, do your own research and come to a clean, conscious decision of what's gonna help your families. Because some of these are not on there to help your families. They're on there to help other people become richer off your family. And, um, just know what you're voting for, just because a, 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 um, one of them says that it's gonna be an exemption for you, don't believe that it's gonna benefit you in the long run. It may say that you're gonna get a tax exemption, but it's not gonna benefit you in the long run. So do your research due diligent. Um, I know I've seen, um, Commissioner Wood has commented on someone that is a tax assessor's. I mean, not a tax assessor, she is a, um, CPA, and she wanted some clear dialogue on some of these bills. And that's what we've tried to give them. Um, but do your research before you go in there and cast a ballot. Don't just say yes or no, just because, oh, I don't have time to read this, there's some that might be important. But just remember, do your homework before you go to vote. If you don't know, ask somebody that you truly believe knows what's best for your interest. Okay, they want us to hold your thunder, don't they?
It's okay, it's all right.
Um, went to leadership training, and I don't know that our department heads were invited, so my apologies. Um, I think the old w- way we used to do it is certain department heads got to go, and I think all department heads should go. Um, one of the classes was, oh my gosh, um, I can't, I can't remember the name of it, but it basically had us talking about our value system. Um, about liberty, about prosperity and so on, and these are the things that we tussle with inside, um, the meeting. Um, and when you understand where somebody's coming from, it's easier to have a dialogue about it. And I say all that to say, I think that our county employees should be eligible for ACCG, um, meeting, so if there are opportunities, we need to make it available to them. Um, I remember Tim used to go, um, Don used to go, and sometimes John would go. But again, from the department head down, we need to include them. This was, um, in my class, there were more county employees than there were commissioners.
I've been saying that too.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's not just department heads, they're actually bringing assistants.
There's one county that sends all theirs. They keep teasing about them.
Uh-huh.
Amen.
Yeah, and you can hear them when everybody's getting a war, 'cause they, they taking up about half the room.
Yep, and so that was my real takeaway, that we need to entrust in our, um, employees, the training that happens, um, and please, county clerk, take a look at what's out there and maybe send it to them and have them pick, you know, so that way they know, um, what they can take. Because not only is there sharing of information, but you get to meet your counterparts, um, and you get to hear their stories, you know, and Valdosta right now's got a story that they're telling, and, um, it, it, it means a lot when they thank other counties for their support. So, um, that's my takeaway, and, and I want everybody to have some fun when they do go to classes, 'cause sometimes it is hilarious. Um, but you should bring something back to the county, and, and that I want to bring back and share, so people have a, a perspective of what we do and why we do what we do when we're doing it. So, thank you.
Mr. Kitchen, you're on. I always get you, I always get you on the last, I forgot to.
Yeah, they must told so much, and, 'cause I was gonna say exactly that, that the relationships you build at these, these, uh, conferences and these training sessions and leadership sessions are, is invaluable. Um, and he's right, we heard, um, one of our keynote speakers was in an area that was really affected by the storm. And this is a grown man that got very emotional about how many people came to their county and helped them out. We've sent, Sheriff's Department sent people down there, we sent equipment, and, but, it's kinda like. We've sent, Sheriff's Department sent people down there. We sent equipment and, but it's kinda like, you know, we've had people that their house burned down and people just come out of the woodwork because that's what we do in Jones County. Is we show up when people need us. And we're known for that and we love it and that's, that's what makes us who we are. But when you see it on a bigger scale from a county that size and a grown man getting emotional at how many people brought stuff to him, it's really moving that, because, you know, he, he told the story. He woke up and sheriff called him and says, I can't get down the road. We got an emergency and I can't get down the road. There's trees everywhere. And he jumped up, put his boots on and went and got on his tractor and spent six hours getting the sheriff, cutting trees with, with a group of guys cutting trees to get the sheriff to town to get an ambulance to the emergency. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we don't think about how big and how widespread it was. But, you know, you learn things like down there that, that we're all have some of the same issues and have some of the same problems. And the flip side of that, and I think all these folks will agree, we also see a lot of stuff at these conferences that make us go, man. I'm glad we ain't like them. We, we ain't got it that bad. I mean, people that, that, that can't get along with their own commissioners, can't get along with their sheriff's department, can't get along with their constitutional officers and the judges and their city counterparts that, I mean, to the lawsuit effect. I mean, people that are, that are filing lawsuits every time you turn around. And every time the taxpayer loses because you're, you're, you're representing and defending or accusing on both sides of it. So it, it makes me very thankful that we have the relationships we have in our county. Makes me thankful that we understand other counties have some of the same issues. We're not unique. But it, it, I'm, I'm grateful for Jones County every time I go to these things that, that, how we act. I mean, we, 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 we bicker and fight like brothers and sisters, but that's what it is. It's not in, it's not, it's not animosity and it's not a grudge and it's not mean spirited. It is, it is fighting for what you want. So I say all that to say that, you know, Wendy said, don't believe everything you read on Facebook, two seconds after she said, I shared your Facebook post.
But you gotta read.
So. Don't believe it though. I don't believe what you read on Facebook.
You can believe that one.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wood?
All right. Echo whatever all the other Commissioners have said. Couple weeks ago, I went to a planning and zoning training in Macon and I was happy to see our P and Z officer, Tim, was there and I think all his supporting board but one. So that was good to see everybody and the new board members were in attendance, getting the planning and zoning course, you know, behind them. It's eight hours. I think Tim even picked out some things in that class, he told me. So I was glad to see that. And that'll help our county. But remember, go vote. It's important, this election. A lot of things on the ballot.
Yeah, that's all I got. Commissioner Kitchen, as I echoed, you know, as far as what we encounter at these conferences and stuff and we hear the horror stories that we learn from other people's mistakes. And I cannot tell you the number of times we've gone to these conferences and they'll say, whatever you do, don't do this. You know, or before you go to this, make sure you have this in place. And having somebody that's been there and done that, that can share that with us is priceless. Now, you learn a lot at classes, but I, I, I will hands down will tell you, we've learned even more, if not way more with the other Commissioners and, and, I mean, all the way down to public works and their assistants and stuff. They'll, you know, they'll share this with you and that's a, that's valuable for us because it's, it saves us the mistake making part. And that's, that's priceless.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. I know there's no discussion on that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, thank you.